I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll review the agenda. Any additions or corrections or changes to be made?
No.
We'll entertain motion. Move in second. Jake.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, looks like no public comment on board agenda. Construction update.
Jeff was supposed to be here, but obviously he's not, so I did get the notes. Uh, Kraus has completed electrical and architectural and district list. Uh, some other items on the district list were not on the drawings. Uh, other few items is when I received, Tony had to leave Kraus to be completed. He's got a couple of other things that Tony sent. Johnson Wood has also completed, uh, all but a couple of items in mechanical list and district list. Should be completed this week. Uh, an area of painting, I have that. C and M, they completed the district punch list and are now complete. They did finish, uh, pads in the high school gym, so I think that was the last thing. Helms caulking completed architectural and district punch list and now complete. Integral, uh, which is the bleachers, uh, the replacement boards are on the floor. It's scheduled to be installed yet this week. Fire is working with Duralast engineers to design snow guard, uh, installation location for the slope roofs. Uh, probably just over the doorways and whatnot. We have some snow that's sliding down those slope roofs and there's gonna be like icebreakers put in. Uh, the ones that, uh, friends inspect out are almost like a, I don't know, it's like a home vehicle or something. Not really a commercial, so we're figuring that out. Uh, looking to back back one day this week, after which they'll need approval from King Scott. Uh, very nice. Day's glass is waiting on replacement windows. Uh, there was some replacement windows in the elementary office that were, had some iron pieces when they ground steel shot into the window. Um, those have to be replaced. Uh, Booms has completed a majority of the architectural punch list. As everyone knows, they're holding contracts, um, and several bids. Uh, Booms, curved entrance canopy. Sofit is complete. The metal roof panels need to be curved. Cannot do it onsite because it's too cold. Uh, contractor is taking that, I have a company, I guess they was taking them back to the heated shop and they are curving them there to put on the curved piece out front here. Uh, bus garage, uh, completed siding roofing and main doors. Overhead door contractor will install the overhead doors midweek to late next week. Still have to install others and downspines. Metal wall panels on M nineteen. They're installing the plywood and tieback on two seventeen. Uh, will install the metal panels in the spring. It's not like they got that finished. Additional doors, they should be arriving by the end of February. Can install as soon as they receive or can install over spring break. Punch list, they have completed the interior punch list that was created by the architect in school. Uh, we are still reviewing pictures that were recently sent us. So the hundred and ninety-two or eighty-six pictures, they still have those to go. Uh, rooms, there, this is from Mary. Uh, pictures, uh, some of the areas, the areas of the rooms will need some touch up. Uh, Helms caulking is touched up with paint. Hallways have been touched up. Paste, uh, washed off from tile walls and stairways. Girls locker room, room walls are touched up. Chroma green, which is the backing for the Apple Lab, that green wall, that's how they do their film. Uh, they put two coats on, they need to put another two coats on. They will probably do that this week. Uh, exterior painting, the elementary doors and, uh, above the doors have not been done to cold. Uh, door near boiler room and ag room, both need to be sanded and repainted. Uh, tile needs painting in boys locker room. Heating units need painting. This is said in my conversation with Joel last summer, there'd be additional seventy dollars per room to paint the heating units. Um, so I guess some of those units have to be painted there. I think we took shots of them, I don't remember if I'm gonna take a look at them. Uh, Phoenix and the high school principal's office, that may be filled and touched up. And they're still looking through the pictures as well. So, that is the update. Uh, I did talk to Dan. He plans on coming March board meeting with a, he's hoping a final budget delivery. Um, it sounds like from everything I've read, I don't know if it'll be a final, like we're closing out. Um, obviously I did receive, so I can give you a construction update. I did receive a letter from East Point Interiors about the, um, idea of that, they're basically stating that they're gonna replace the floors with Armstrong. So the floors will be replaced this summer, so an actual closeout, closeout, you're not gonna get it. You're not gonna get that probably till, I'm gonna say next August. Where we're saying, okay, we're completely paid, everything's paid, everything's done. This is, I mean, they'll give us an idea of what we have left over for money, but you're still gonna have the whole flooring aspect that has to be recompleted. And, um, tomorrow Virgil from All Steel will be here to give us a prototype for the computer tables. Um, the computer tables, all the wire was supposed to be hit underneath the tables. He has a prototype tomorrow, uh, that he's gonna put on, make sure it works meets our, our, um, what we want to do as a school district, what we want it to look like. And then if that works, they'll produce them and put them in. Um, I don't know what else. Uh, I still think we have the out, I had also talked to Dan and let him know that we have the outside um, area to shoot pictures of yet. We haven't completed that. And Tony did send me a list, uh, Friday of some other things that he thought. So, I mean, you're gonna, we sent the list, but I need to shoot some pictures to, so they know what it is. And we still have the outside that we have to walk around. And hopefully do that here in the, it's a little bit warmer, the snow melts off to finish up that. And Dan's aware of that as well. So, he's telling me March, he's supposed to give us a final. Well, as final as it can be, because obviously there's still things that gotta be finished, but that's where we're at.
Okay. You vote rebates?
Uh, rebates, I gave him that. Now that, um, Kraus is done, they'll put the rebates together. I did talk to him about that. I did talk about the change orders. I think I got that list out.
I never got another one. Meeting we hadn't had over?
He said that when you first started, that there was some things that we had in our punch list that weren't discussed. Uh, that was Kraus. Uh, it's under existing conditions, I'll have to, is that what I was talking about there? So, I'll have to see what he's talking about that weren't part of the specs. Mary had some I had too and P.
Painted.
Yeah.
In the vents.
Yeah. Um, the unit vents were not, are, they're supposed to all paint them one color, I guess, but it's just like, we need to write the specs. So we'll have to look at the specs and find that out. Because it's supposed to be the color of the room. She did say that, like rooms C one oh six and C one oh seven, um, the maintenance group handles when she was painting. So, obviously that would be her, her cost. Um, I'll get those change orders out to the board, what they, they've finished and then I'll find out on the meetings.
Any more questions on that for Joe? Alright, well, we'll move on to the regular meeting minutes, review of minutes. Everybody should have got those in their packet. If there's no questions, we're in motion for that.
I'm going to go to the regular meeting minutes for January nineteenth.
Move in second. Uh, move on to both. Jake.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next is the special meeting for January eighteenth. Second. Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Financial report. Mr. Stacer.
Financial report. General fund cash and investments, one point three million, as of one thirty-one twenty. General fund revenue, revenue for the month, six hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty. General fund expenditures for the month, five hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-one. Payrolls. Lunch fund revenue for the month, twenty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-six. Lunch fund expenses for the month, thirty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-four. Lunch fund balance, one hundred seven thousand, three hundred thirty-four. January claim of seventeen thousand, nine hundred forty-three. Oh eight, fourteen and eighteen debt retirement revenue for the months, two thousand fourteen, twenty-five thousand, seventy-two. Oh eight, eight dollars, seventy-eight cents. And two thousand eighteen, one hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-seven. Oh eight, fourteen and two thousand eighteen debt retirement expenditures. Two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen and two thousand eighteen debt retirement cash and investments. Two thousand fourteen, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred forty-nine. Two thousand eight, thirty-one thousand, seventy-two. Two thousand eighteen, two hundred fifteen thousand, twenty-four. Two thousand eighteen capital tech project revenue for the month, seven hundred thirty-three. Expenditures for the month, one hundred thirty-three thousand, ninety-eight. Cash and investment balance, two million, eighty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-two. Special revenue fund, eight thousand, five hundred thirty-three. Expenditures for the month, twenty-five thousand, three. General fund accounts payable. Sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine. Accounts payable, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-nine. Payrolls, which include benefits, five thousand, one hundred sixty dollars athletic. Four thousand, six hundred thirty-four credit card. One hundred thirty-three thousand, ninety-eight capital project. I believe that's a total of six hundred seventy thousand, forty-two.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Yes, the, we just need to talk about the capital tech project there and that, uh, we're, I mean, it's not the capital, it's not a tech.
No, I'm sorry, didn't catch that.
It should be the building.
Yeah, we'll just throw a building on that.
Capital building. Capital. We had revenue of seven thirty-three and expenditures one hundred thirty-three, we got two million, eighty-three thousand.
Good catch. Okay. Alright, well, that's the report. Uh, do we have a motion to approve it? Is there a second? Second by Jake, move by Nancy. Um, all the favor.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Alright, uh, next we have administrative reports, principals report we'll start with, so, Mr. Connor.
Good evening. Um, this week we have our literacy PLCs for, um, first in K one and two, three. K one goes tomorrow, um, and two, three goes on Wednesday. Um, that is where they work with our literacy coaches, um, Merrill Plinsky and Lori Preston, um, to dig in deeper into the essential practices that they have to have and also to help them with our CPLA remediation part of it. We have a professional development on Friday, um, this Friday. Elementary will be reviewing our math program, so we're gonna work with some routine, math routines with Jenny Kusak. Um, she's gonna model some and then teach us some things that we can add into it. Um, the Envision, um, company is gonna come in and share their program or their books and, uh, high school has already done it with the high school portion of it. We haven't done it with elementary, so we're gonna kind of dig into that, what if that's something that we might, uh, go to. And then Chris and Marilyn Pyanka, they're working with Chris Wright, um, and working with a website called Build Math Minds. Um, has strategies on it to teach numeracy and, um, kind of a number sense thing. So they're gonna share some videos and some things like that to, um, maybe have our teachers kind of improve in their math skill. So it's kind of all math oriented. So that's gonna be that three hour, um, chunk of time that our teachers will be at. Um, students of the month for January for PBS assembly, this, uh, January was the month that they did the bowling. So it was kind of, um, you know, you get an orange ticket, every other month you get an orange ticket, you, you win a prize. Well, this one they won an orange ticket and they either have to get a spare or a strike, um, and then their age level with it as they go through. Um, teachers had to, uh, white tickets run out, teachers had to pull a strike for it. So the winners of that, that would have went through, all students that had an orange ticket, got a trinket or some sort, you know, whatever else, but these are the actual winners. Um, first grade was Ariana Clark and Kinley McDonald. Second grade was Jose Ramirez and Peyton Sheerheart. Third grade was Gabby Hagan and Asher Waterback. Fourth grade was Gabby Walsh, Madison Shoemaker and Sean Martin. And then fifth grade we had Hope Briski and Tyree Assamaker. Um, our white, um, ticket winners, pull a strike with Mrs. Camp and Mrs. Clay. Um, however, because I had to keep drawing out white tickets and, um, whatever else, I also gave free recesses too. So I take them up for recess, I take their kids up, but I gave every grade level a recess then so that the teachers could collaborate for twenty minutes or fifteen minutes. Um, I'm not comfortable with this outside. So, and then, um, Mr. Yuckster, um, and the Knights of Columbus sponsored an abuse poster, substance abuse poster contest for our fifth, sixth and seventh grade students. Um, and it started probably in December, um, by the time they got the posters done. It either worked within their classrooms or with Miss Leslie, um, in their art classes, uh, to do those. And then they, um, picked three winners from each grade level. The winners, uh, first place winners received fifteen dollars, second place received ten dollars and third place received five dollars. So in our seventh grade winners, um, first place was Mercedes Lanningburg. Um, second place was Brienne Adams. Um, third place was Owen Worchuk. In our sixth grade, first place was Ariana Amen. Second place was Suzanne Shpiewinski. And third place was Isabel Wright. In our fifth graders was Braden Swing, first place. Um, second place, Waverly Hagan. And third place, Destiny Byfran. Um, and combinations this month go to Chris Wright, who, um, works tirelessly and kind of under, under the radar of trying to promote an atmosphere of positivity, um, putting candy in the break room, making sure that, um, part of the sunshine committee and things like that. So creates that classroom and building, um, positive atmosphere that we all want to have. So, that's it for me.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Warner.
Uh, yeah, a few things going on in the high school as well. Um, we began our seven AM SAT class last week. Uh, we have thirteen students that are currently enrolled in that class, which may not sound like a lot, but considering the junior class only has forty-four students in it, we've got not quite a third of that class, so, uh, not a bad number there. Uh, they, again, they go Mondays and Wednesdays at seven AM. Uh, so they'll do that now for the next month and a half or so until spring break. Uh, another thing that we've been working on lately, on our website, we have Did You Know video. We have two of them out there currently. Uh, they're out there for anybody to access. Uh, one is on how to work with Microsoft Teams. So if there are parents out there, they're not sure how to navigate Microsoft Teams and they wanna know, how do I check if my kid has their assignments or what they're doing in class? There's a video out there, it's about three, four minutes and it'll show them everything they need to know about Microsoft Teams. Uh, the other one we have out there right now is, um, the counseling department and all the different, uh, all the information that, that's out there on the website for the counseling department. So those are the two that we have now. We are working on more, uh, and hopefully we'll have some up there shortly. So, uh, those are the Did You Know videos on the website. Uh, also last week, the ISD came up and had the STEM day for our sixth and seventh graders, uh, where they're doing hands-on type projects, um, they have virtual reality simulators, things like that. So, uh, again, STEM is science, technology, engineering and mathematics. So they came up here for the day and worked with our seventh, their sixth and seventh graders and, uh, did all kinds of fun educational things with them. Uh, tomorrow I have planned a pizza party for our mentors. Uh, they've been working hard with our mentees here for several months now. Uh, we've done a few things to reward them throughout the year, but, uh, tomorrow we're gonna have a pizza party and sit down and talk to them about what's going well and what we can do to help improve that program and make it even better in the years to come. So, um, again, we've got about roughly thirty mentor mentoring pairs right now, so it seems to be going pretty good. Um, another thing that came across my desk is this award right here. Um, AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. I'll just read the, the first paragraph here, I won't read the whole letter. It says, congratulations, your school has been earned the college board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for attaining female student representation, AP Computer Science Principals for two thousand nineteen. Out of twenty thousand institutions that offer AP courses, yours is one of only six hundred and thirty-nine to be recognized for achieving this important result. Uh, this honor acknowledges that the outstanding work your school is doing to close the gender equity gap in computer science. Congratulations to Ms. Purdue, she, she does the AP computers class, so nice job there in earning that award. Um, other than that, uh, this month I'd like to commend Ms. Alyssa Brawlett. Uh, she's only been in our district for about six months and she's been, uh, a really great addition. She's working well on both sides with both the elementary and the high school. Um, she's doing some extra things on the side and coaching and works well with the kids, works well with the staff. She's, anything you ask her, she's right on top of it. Uh, so she's been a, a really good addition to our staff and, uh, hopefully she'll be here for quite some time, so. Last thing I have are the students of the month. Sixth grade, Cole Maurer. Seventh grade, Ethan Maurer. Eighth grade, Aaron Harris. Ninth grade, Uncle Cook. Tenth grade, Jenna Arts. Eleventh grade, Lindsay Dzinski. And twelfth grade, Danielle Sheerheart. Think that's it?
Alright, perfect, thank you. Alright, we skipped by Tony, you're.
No, he insists, no, I don't have, he's got the recorder.
Uh. That'll speed you up.
Athletic boosters, you have a sheet there that I handed you that I circled. Uh, athletic boosters, I had talked, uh, I've sent to you guys this information before, so you should know what it looks like. Um, we have moved athletic boosters, next year athletic boosters will take over all concessions. So at the end of this year, I had talked to you about that. Um, I was approached by, uh, a couple booster members this past, past week and asking about the payment. I guess there was a sixty, forty split at some time that was supposed to happen between, uh, the boosters as far as revenue of what we receive for a total and then what we receive back at the school. Although in our office, we can't find any, anything that says that, but that's what I'm told. So, uh, but we cannot find any letter of agreement or a board adopted policy or anything even the board adopted saying that there was. They were requesting this forty-five, twenty-four, one, pay to the school dis, from the school district to the boosters. On the right-hand side of the column, you can see what the boosters has given back to the athletic program from two thousand sixteen, seventeen all the way through eighteen, nineteen. I guess they need to get an idea of where the board sits on this and either put it on the agenda for tonight that you're gonna approve that or do it to the next month and maybe you guys have some time to think about it. Um, but this, this probably does need to be done by June thirtieth so that when we move the, um, concession stands over to the boosters, this is either saying, oh, no good luck, can we wish you the best and we've got the concession stand and we're not going to pay for forty-five hundred, um, or perhaps for twenty-five hundred. That will need to be at some point reconciled.
Do you have a copy of the bylaws and policies?
I don't even know if they have a copy of the bylaws and policies. If they do, I have a receipt.
They gave us some paperwork when they started this year, uh, a file. I'll have to look and see what's all.
Like are they registered as like a five oh one C three or anything like that?
I believe now they are.
They are now.
Yeah, probably will be mature to say yes or no on whether we're gonna say, you know, you're not giving money until we know what the bylaws actually state, I guess.
I don't know where the old, we didn't have no old bylaws, because that's what I was looking for, is the old bylaws that would have stated that it's a sixty-four. At some point we can't find where it says it.
So. Well, if it's just an agreement in the office and, and the way I will do that, or.
I have no idea really where it came from. Could you find anything, Terry?
I've looked through all board minutes from even Mark Tembusch's days. I mean, I've looked through, like, almost just about everything. And I can't find anywhere where it says it, you don't have anything that I know of signed by anybody.
And I'm not saying that we don't own the money, we just can't find anything documented that says this is how it's supposed to be split up.
Okay.
So, that's, that's something that will need to be reconciled. At least they're asking me and I told them I'd bring it up to the board tonight.
So it's, we're supposed to start sixteen, seventeen then? Or, I mean, what happened in previous ten years? They've paid it.
That's why I voted retire and I accepted that decision.
So there's no record.
I didn't know about it.
There's no record before that. That's why we did.
There's not, there's no ledger items or anything.
If you, if you go and look through each account number as far as, so just athletic boosters, the account number we had for them back when they were in house. Um, you could see that in there, but again, at the end there, I didn't know, it was something that needed to go in there. So it's not something that was.
So was, there's no way to reconcile exactly what that was?
No.
Type of thing.
Right. And I didn't know she was doing that back and forth. It was just like an end, ending closeout at the end of the year that just got put in there and then it was brought to my attention, um, just this past year.
So. Sounds a little more like working on that one.
Yeah, we'll need to, we'll try to get you what we can get you, but, again, we'll just need to reconcile at some point. Uh, friend of youth, I sent out who they, who the past winners were. I also sent out some suggestions. You guys obviously can come up with anybody. That does need to be on the March board meeting, so you'll need to give me a name of who that is. Um, pole barn bids for the soil only are due Wednesday. I did receive the drawing of the building. I'm gonna take that up to the Huron County, uh, building zoning and building, see what I need to do, if I need to, if I need to add architectural. Um, some are telling me yes, some are telling me no, it does not, so I'm gonna go find out what it means. Um, and then obviously we'll probably have to post that on our website in the paper for taking bids on building. Um, so just letting you know, we need to have the soil. I think it's closed at three o'clock, so we'll. I told you about the letters, I told you about the computer table fix that's happening tomorrow. Letters on the floor. Uh, twenty-fourth, next month, a week from, is that a week from today? I mean, two weeks from today, it's only the tenth. We have the rededication of the gym, that'll take place. Uh, we have representatives from nineteen thirty-seven, sixty-seven and then our two thousand twenty-eight team. Um, and Mr. Um, Mr. Dick Plaza, Richard Plaza has put together a, um, script. Um, Mr. Plaza and Mr. Maurer have been working on it. I think we're good to go, we're kind of doing some retros. I'm gonna get up and speak a little bit, a short, short conversation about what we did for the bond issue at the gym. And then there'll be some players talk, there's an audio coming in from Mr. Holdship. Obviously, he's out in Arizona, but he's got audio that he's got, we're gonna play and should be a pretty fun night, um, for our school and we're kind of rededicating the gym.
Is that gonna be recorded?
Uh, I'm sure Mr. Kay will have something that will be able to put on a video, maybe put up on a video.
Website or something.
That we can throw on the website. So Mr. Kay, yeah, something like that. Or, uh, Rick will probably have something, you know, and he'll have, yeah, it'll be recorded.
It'll probably be.
Yeah, there'll be something by him. Uh, if the board is going to, uh, entertain school board scholarships again, um, they will need to do that and the April board meeting, after the April board meeting, you guys usually meet on or before or whatever. Figure that out so we can get that to Mr. Turner. Um, I think that's it.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Well, the whole business, so we'll move on to the action items. First we have the eighth grade Washington DC trip that they've been doing for a couple of years now.
Yeah, I did pass around that flyer, there has the information there. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Again, that's been a great trip for our kids for several years and, uh, it's gone well. So, I don't know if there's any questions.
I've heard great things and it seems like it keeps evolving into something better every year.
No.
If we can entertain a motion.
I'll move to, to Washington DC, check the script.
Second. Alright, move in second, move, move. Jake.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Uh, revised budget nineteen twenty. Harry.
We're trying not to sound like an auctioneer this time. Okay. So in front of you, we have the resolution which shows kind of the differences between, um, some of the sections of revenue and expenditures that we're coming up with for this revised budget. And also I have machine that's up on the board. Um, it shows some of the increases and decreases in each section as well. So, I am proposing we're gonna have a deficit at this moment of twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars of that deficit. Um, some of the changes in our revenue, we have increased in total revenue of two hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, looking at our local revenue, we have increased eighty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine. Um, some sections that increased in there is we had a local tax decrease, um, by eight thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars. But we had an increase of preschool tuition of seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty. Um, our activity count, we, um, as I explained last year in our June budget, our, um, internal accounts had been moved, whether it's into the general fund or into the, um, special revenue fund. Your special revenue funds are gonna consist. Your special revenue funds are gonna consist of teacher-based programs or your FFA, FCCALA, eighth grade trip, those types of accounts are moved into special revenue, which we'll talk again about in June for that final budget. But as of right now, my elementary activities, high school activities, those funds are the ones that are gonna be into the general fund because they're grant by revenues. So we have increased in that by thirty-five thousand two hundred. This year we have to move the internal account that was remaining in that revenue into this new revenue, so that's why you see that higher number in this section of the budget. We also had an increase of twenty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars in the MSP grant. The way the MSP grant works is we received a portion, which I'll explain a little bit later, in state revenue, but we also received the remaining amount that we needed to pay for as a school district from the bond into this general fund local revenue, because we're getting some money from the bond, we just put that into miscellaneous funded local revenue. Which brings me to the state revenue portion, which increased by two hundred and seventy thousand four dollars. And I'm gonna go right into that MSP grant, which actually has to do with these panic buttons that are around the school, that's where this money came from, is from the MSP grant. The state portion of that was sixty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars. And again, we had to make up the difference through the grant, that was one of the stipulations that we had, that extra twenty thousand dollars coming from the bond. We also got an increase of Proposal A in the discretionary fund of eighty-five thousand one hundred and nineteen, and this has to do with that per pupil number that Joe and I were trying to come up with, that got proposed by the governor and now is at eight thousand one hundred and eleven dollars per pupil, and so we have that increases of eighty-five thousand. We also received a bonus share of robotics grant for twelve thousand dollars. And then we had a couple miscellaneous items throughout the state aid fund that also increased, or we also got to keep, I guess, this year, probably everything that's been approved. The next section is our federal, which is our Title I, Title II, and Title V. And that increased in, basically all three of those funds increased, I'll give you that total of twenty-four thousand one ninety-four increase in that section. We did have a decrease of seventy-two thousand four thirty-five in the other financing sources, and this has to do with two specific things. We had a decrease in the preschool GSRP. How GSRP works is you have kids in our preschool class that qualify for either GSRP or tuition fees. Our GSRP number fell from last year, so we had a decrease in what I had proposed in June, but as I explained before, we had an increase in tuition. So tuition went up, but our preschool went down, or our GSRP portion went down that we get collected by the ISD. We also had a decrease in special ed. How special ed works is we are fortunate enough through Huron County to receive a very large portion of money back from the ISD. But the only way we can receive this money is if we spend it. So how it works is every quarter I give the ISD a report, they look at my figures that we expend, expenditures, and then they take off what we were paid by the state and they make up the difference in that section. So as of right now, we can't necessarily collect all of that money because we haven't expended all of it. We're gonna try to come up with ways to move some items that we can into special ed, but it is very difficult because not everything is qualified as a special ed reversible item. Even with Coach Joe, if you wanna do anything else about that, but...
Well, I'll give you an idea. I'll use Alyssa. So we have a teacher that is kind of, in the morning, she has a first hour kind of overflow of about sixteen kids in that class that she works with. They're not all special ed. I can't count that hour and, and charge the stick of coming back and say, hey, she's a special ed teacher, I wanna count this out, we'll kick that out because there's general ed kids in there. So I have to pay for that on a general ed fund, I can't pay for that on a special ed fund. So it's stuff like that, they, they look at what we send them monthly and they say, yep, that's expendable, that's a legal expendable cost, or no, that's not a legal expendable cost, and we have to cover that because that's special ed.
I guess another example I think of is say there's a printer in a special ed classroom. The ISD tells me if a general ed student has access to that printer, I can't count that the ink or anything towards special ed costs. I mean, they are pretty...
It's just out of...
Yeah, it's very difficult to spend this money. So we're gonna try to be a little bit creative, but just to let you know, that's why that proportion of the money decreased. So, and then that brings our total revenue now to seven million two hundred and eighty...
Yeah, leave the door open. Door, door is still open.
Okay.
Thanks, that's, that's a good idea.
Nice, nice thought.
Yeah, so anyway, that brings our total revenue to seven million two hundred and eighty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-four. Now moving on to the expenditures, we had also an increase in expenditures of one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and four. Looking at basic programs, which is anything to do with teaching, we had a increase in preschool for, we had an additional fair pro added because we had eighteen students, and we filled our preschool classroom, so we had eighteen students who needed additional body, so we had an increase there. But we had a decrease of teaching supplies of seventy-three fifty and a decrease in dual enrollment of forty-five hundred. The next section is editing, this has to do with special ed cost and also Title I and Title II. So we had a decrease in the special ed wages of thirty-one thousand. We had an increase in our Title I and Title II, and we also had an increase in special ed, special ed mini grants is another portion of money we get back from the ISD. Each teacher gets to apply for a mini grant, so that increased from my proposed budget. The next section has to do with people support, and in this section, our funds increased by seventeen thousand ninety dollars. The biggest increase in here was our nursing costs and also the supplies for nursing. Before we didn't have that high of a nursing cost, but we had worked with the hospital and come up with a way to actually keep our nurse here at the school so that we even lose that service we were being provided. And we also, after splitting up our parapoles into at resident title, we had maneuvered them around from my original budget, so that also increased wages and benefits of eight thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. In our instructional staff report, we had a decrease of thirty-five thousand by thirty-five. And again, that has to do with some Title I and Title II and also the library. We moved a teacher out of the library and put them into some actual classrooms, and we added in the librarian here as a library aide rather than a full-time teacher. That's why you see a decrease there. The general administration portion is next, and it has to do with our, well, Joe's office and also his board. We had an increase of nine thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars, and the increase for that has to do with, we had an increase of thirty-eight fifty in audit costs and an increase of twenty-five hundred in legal costs, and then we also had a donation for the use of our gym for other teams of two thousand fifty-six dollars. The next section has to do with the school administration, so anything to do with the principals' offices. We had an increase of twenty-six thousand eight forty-eight overall, and again, I explained those activity accounts, so now not only do they have the revenue portion, they also have expense, expense portion as well. And I started out with fifteen thousand, I'm not sure how that's gonna work this year because all of your field trips and everything are gonna be ran through that account. So after this year, I'll have a better feel of what that's going to be, but as of right now, I put our expenses at about fifteen thousand. We also had an increase of the elementary principal insurance of eighteen thousand, our previous elementary principal took cash a move. The next section is the business section, which is my office. There was miscalculation on some retirement, so that is part of that increase of thirteen thousand, and also we had just a few other little sections in there that increased as The next section is operations and maintenance, which increased by eighty-two thousand six forty-one. That has to do with the MSP grant. The state tells me I have to code it in there, so that's why that difference is so extensive. There was eighty-one thousand seven twenty-one added to that account, and again, it washes with the revenue.
Two hundred.
Yeah. But we should have a decrease. I decreased snow removal by about three thousand, just because it hasn't really been that bad of winter. But then we had, on the flip side of that, we added a new custodian who took the insurance, where the other individual did not, so we had a slight increase there as well. The next section is transportation, and we increased by thirty-eight dollars. There's just a few minor changes in the transportation section, nothing too elaborate there. Our next section is central support, which has to do with any technology, and also athletics are all rolled into that one account. An increased technology, eleven fifty. Our technology director's planning on going and getting his MSBO certification, so he's gonna be going to a couple more certified classes this year through MSBO, so it increases travel costs and PD costs a little bit there. We did have a decrease in Title II in this section, again, this just has to do with account numbers, and that's why you see that there was actually a decrease in this section. And it's more just moving money up into a different account, so there was seventeen thousand dollars there that just got moved up into a different section up above. So nothing really changed, it just got moved from one section to another. But we also had a slight increase in coaches as well to make the difference, five thousand three hundred and seven dollars less than the proposed budget, which brings our overall expenditures to seven million three hundred and five thousand five hundred and twenty-two.
Questions for Terry? Guess not. Okay, thank you, Terry. We need a motion to approve revised budget. Seconded by Nancy, seconded by Joe. Any discussion at all? Jake?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Good job. All right, next, we have resignation of Moses Gardner as varsity boys track coach. I guess I got the, just to read that, pretty short and sweet. Please accept this, Dear Mr. Mauer, please accept this letter as a formal notification, I am resigning as the Ugly, Ugly Boys Varsity Track Coach, sincerely, Moses Gardner. We have motion.
I move that we accept the resignation of Moses Gardner, if you agree with this statement.
Jake?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have resignation of Heidi Sweeney. Mr. Mauer, I would like to resign to my position as JV softball coach, sincerely, Heidi Sweeney. Motion for that?
I will be seconded.
Second, I'll move in a second. Jake?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next up, we have a new hire, Alyssa Brawlet as the JV softball coach replacing Heidi Sweeney. Do we have motion to approve that?
I move that we hire Alyssa Brawlet as a JV softball coach.
Seconded.
All right, move in second, and I just want to add here, so Mr. Mauer wrote this, Alyssa was a former player for Coach Nikoski and Coach Stone, she would be a great asset and will fit in well with our program, so that's a recommendation, just remember. So we have a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, finally, we have the approval of the returning spring coaches. These are varsity baseball coach Jim Becker, varsity softball coach Courtney Nikoski, assistant varsity softball captain Stone, girls varsity track coach Pat Balda, junior high track coach Stu Kalashewski. And right now, the golf and the boys varsity track positions are open, so this is a blanket renewal of all of those coaches. We have motion for that.
Awesome.
Nancy moves.
Aye.
Seconded by Joe. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Public comment doesn't look like it's business. Next meeting, Monday, March ninth, seven o'clock, in the library, getting adjourned.